Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is seven o'clock on Tuesday, February 19th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Russato?
Here.
Atech?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Shanzig?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, and let the record reflect for the audience and also those viewing at home that Alderman Callahan is joining us tonight via the telephone as he's home nursing a... getting over pneumonia. So we'll move on then to item number two, which is a reminder for everyone to please use the microphone so that everyone can hear us from home and we get a good recording. Item three is approval of the minutes for January 29th, 2019. That is for the committee of the whole meeting. Anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So, motion by Stark, second by Meitzler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Marty. Item four, items removed, added, or changed. We have none that I know of. Anybody have anything?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Item five is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody in the public has something for us that's not on the agenda, now would be a good time to come up to the podium. Seeing none, we're gonna move right on then to item number six, which is the wastewater treatment plant, monthly project update. Alderman O'Brien.
We have Jerry Ruth from Tribe and Associates, and he is gonna give us our monthly update and let us know how we're doing.
Hello.
All right. To the right, view here. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Last month, down at the wastewater treatment plant, workers are continuing to complete the interior electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. Actually, mechanical as in HVAC and the plumbing work. We're basically calling complete now. We're waiting for startup of HVAC equipment, which is depending on power distribution, which I'll get into later. Glass windows, if you can see on this overall picture, we're finally getting windows on the facade of the building. They have... since they don't have power to this building yet, they still have a couple windows with temporary power going into the building and temporary heat going into the building, so it's not completely enclosed yet. But all of the flooring is done inside the building, and they're continuing to work six days a week. Electrical is still lagging, but they are putting anywhere between 17 and 25 electricians there onsite per day, so they're not sitting just watching the time go by. Site power distribution is still ongoing. We still don't have all of our power conductors pulled through the site. They've been having some issues with making sure that the cables mega-route, which is a way of testing how conductive the cables are, so they're gonna have to re-pull a couple routes of power. Fencing is also ongoing, but that's on a weather-dependent basis. Digestor operations building, MEPs are ongoing, also plumbing and HVAC is pretty much done waiting for power. Process piping is done, digister gas piping is done as well. And the contractor has started to demobilize, take their equipment off the site, start to bring the area that they were given as part of their staging area back to grade and spreading seed and getting it restored. There's some photos. There's a clear shot of the front of the building last month, and the major change aside from the fact that it got... we got a cold snap and some snow is the fact that we have windows on the face of the building. Here's the south face of the building. Again, not much has changed from the outside, but once you get inside, this is the maintenance garage where you have areas where the operator's gonna be able to use this jib crane to lift equipment off of their trucks and maintain it. The flooring in this area is done, piping is labeled and painted, ready for the city to move in as soon as they get occupancy, which again depended on power. This is one of the two truck loading bays that will be used to load trailers for hauling sludge off of the site. Again, it looks clean. They've got protective board over the floors to protect the sealed concrete that they just finished last week. There's a laboratory. Protection everywhere. Contractor doesn't wanna buy a whole bunch of countertops, so they have paper covering every surface. And the work in this room is about 90% complete. You see the acoustic tile is not done yet. Part of their occupancy is getting an inspection above the ceiling tile, so that won't go in until that inspection is complete. And that won't go in... or that won't happen until they have power. This is a ground-level view of the main building. It looks great, it's just not complete yet. Over the digester ops, digester equipment is ready to go. It was pretty much ready to go in January. Here in February, it's... again, aside from the flurries that we've gotten, it's still waiting for power. Inside, there's been a lot more work over the last month. Safety devices like this yellow gas detection unit are in a couple of the rooms down at the digestion facility. Digister gas piping is the stainless steel piping you see around there, and we've also completed flooring in this area. Painting and operating chains on the larger valves have all been installed. We're almost at a point where we're ready to start turning on equipment. As far as costs go, the contractor has spent 25... or billed 25.3 million with our engineering costs. The city has spent about $29 million so far, and I'm estimating based on their latest projected schedule that they're about 88% done with the work. No change in terms of change orders. There are several CMRs that are sitting out there that we're negotiating with the contractor, but I don't have a grasp on where that is in terms of magnitude. Hopefully, when we come and meet next time, I'll have a change order with me, so you'll have a better idea of what that's going to be. Right now, we're still at that 1.4% of the overall construction cost. All right, last month, we talked about the fact that they basically lost 25 days in a month on critical path work, and LDs at that time were $582,000 to be assessed to Williams Brothers. This month, not great. They lost eight days on critical path work. Now, the estimated damages to be assessed are $614,000. So it is still adding up. This schedule, based on what I've seen, is... it came to me a couple days ago, and I think they're already a couple weeks behind, so I anticipate coming in here next month and telling you that they've lost 10 days. This one is due to those having to pull duct bank conductors again, even though they've already done the work, they have to re-pull it, which is a large material cost for the contractor, but he is paying that and just pulling back through because systems aren't testing out and he can't start anything up until it's there. So that is the overall update for the project. Up on the floor, are there questions?
Questions or comments from anyone?
Jerry, why did they have to pull that again?
Well, they did a mega-test on the power conductors that were pulled through the duct bank from the main building to the sludge handling building, which is the building that wound up taking down in Phase Two. They pulled, I believe it was, three different sets of power conductors, and one of the three wasn't testing out. So that would mean that the building would not have even power distribution and could fault out, and therefore, we lose a lot. We would lose blowers, we would lose our entire aeration system, and we would be in violation within a day.
So they've pulled all that back through? They've pulled out the bad and put in new again, and now is it testing?
They identified the problem this morning, so they haven't pulled anything yet.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know when they're gonna make that pull. I know they have to order cable and several hundred feet, I think it's almost 1,000 feet of cable they have to pull.
So power is the big hang-up?
Power is the big hang-up. Each one of these pulls takes about... the ones that I'm talking about, them having to do again, takes about four days of seven guys working in order to get it done.
So why was it not megging if you found out today?
They didn't determine the cause. They just diagnosed that it wasn't working. A likely cause could be that the cable was cut when they were pulling it through.
Right.
It's a pretty common cause of it to fault out or not have the exact same conductivity as it did.
And it's an underground bank, correct?
It is.
So did they pull any extra conduit? A lot of times, electricians do that in case something is missed, they fill some extra pipe in there regardless if it's 3/4-inch pipe or 4-inch pipe. It costs money, but it costs a lot more money after the fact. So they put it in just so they have an extra raceway, one or two of them. When it's smaller pipes, probably half a dozen of them even, you know?
Yeah.
If they know it's gonna be inaccessible. Did they do that?
They have spares, yes.
They do have spares.
Some of the routes that we're taking are to existing buildings that did not have spares. So unfortunately, in this case, we're going into the sludge handling building, and that had... all of its conduits were filled, except for the raceway that we had chosen for this. So they have to remove the cables that they pulled in that conduit and replace it with the new.
And it could be a damaged conduit?
Could be. That's possible.
Now, if that happens, then what do they do? If there's no additional conduits to use and they've got a damaged conduit below ground, do they have to go back in and tear it out, put a new one in?
We'd explore other options first. Other options could include... well, we'd have to identify every single one of the cables that we have them identified somewhere.
Right.
But we'd have to identify what we could do without temporarily, and then pull that in and terminate it and try to have like a planned, short-term shutdown of the building.
Because one question I have is, what happens if a year from now, five years from now, we have a problem at that same place, and we need to bypass that or we need to reroute it? If we don't have any other conduit, this doesn't sound real good to me that we only have one path to that building to supply power.
I understand your concern. I definitely do. That's why whenever we do a new duct bank, we always provide extra raceways.
So this is something that we're not gonna keep forever, though?
Correct. Phase Two, the whole building goes.
Okay.
But a lot of times, I think to allay your fear a bit is when they... that's why they do the megging.
Right.
So there's really very little reason for anything to be damaged once all the conduits... I mean, all the cabling is pulled and terminated.
It's not moving.
There's nothing really to damage it again, so we should be okay. It's just not thinking ahead for today even, you know?
Right.
So if we're 88% complete, that last 12% is primarily electrical?
Yes. There's demobilization costs and overhead costs and things like that.
Right.
There's also retention that... if you're talking about in terms of dollars, there's plenty there.
Right.
The contractors' pay requests have dwindled quite a bit because they just can't bill out. There's nothing in scope for them to bill.
So will there be any conflict with the subcontractors, only in the sense that, you know, if plumbing is about done and HVAC is done and your piping work is done and your water's done, and they're all waiting for electrical, then they have startup and commissioning, that they have to kinda demobilize and remobilize? That'll be a cost burden to the electrician, I would presume, huh?
I'm not sure where the path would go. It wouldn't go to the city, but however the general contractor would manage that cost, yeah. Additional mobilization for coming out and doing that, I'm sure. We haven't done our final punch list, for example, for all the different items that are just not quite right. It was on somebody's list somewhere, but it just hasn't quite made the final list. We have ongoing punch lists that we've been providing to the contractor for the last six months.
Right.
There's just no point if, you know, if the electrical's not done, we don't know if the fan is rattling or things like that.
Right.
So a lot of it will come down after the power's brought onto the building and after startups. That's when we'll get our real punch lists going.
And I guess along those lines, to keep some things running is, since we don't have power and it is our electric utility providing the power, we're not holding it up?
No.
Okay. Just keeping that clean.
Mm-hmm.
And so the cost of generators, again, would be another burden by the contractor?
If they do have to use a generator, yes.
If they have to use a generator, but I'm sure there's some sort of generation happening for heating and winter conditions that might be a part of the contract, but...
What they're doing is they're... they have sort of a temporary power setup off of the new power transformer that's being brought in to the plant.
Okay.
And they're using that to heat the temporary heaters inside the building, something like that, to make sure nothing freezes.
Right. Okay. I guess the last thing I have is just looking at your photos. When you went through on the south face, you said, you know, the south face of the main building, I believe it was, did I see like latence or something on that, the brick kinda bleeding out salts?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. It bugs me too, to be honest with you. But here, it's... it doesn't appear to be anything that's permanent, and I'll describe why. Let me get there. Okay. This is what you're talking about, bottom of the screen?
Yes.
All right. So this is the building a month before, after it had rained.
Right.
This is after they had done some work on that deck with cutting into concrete. I think that is cement washed off of the deck.
Easily cleaned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You sometimes see effervescence, I think is...
Efflorescence, yeah.
Efflorescence coming off of brick buildings that usually... the north face where it's dark and cool is the south face, so I don't anticipate this being a permanent problem.
Okay. It's something just to be aware of. I mean, it can come up later in life, too.
Yeah.
You know, and so... all right, anybody else? All right, Jerry, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, item eight, resolution... I'm sorry, item number seven, resolution 1619... well, resolution 19-025-R, authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Township and Countryside Fire Protection District. Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. As per the memo, this is a new agreement between the City of Batavia and the Township and Countryside Fire Protection District. We're losing... do you know how many houses it is along Tanner Road?
Uh, somewhere in the vicinity of like about 18, 15, 18.
Is that just to try to balance out access and service?
It's right down the road from the North Aurora Station, too. We literally have to drive by their station in order to protect that area, and it just didn't make any sense.
So it makes sense to not serve those. That was one of the things I wanted to get to, because I know like when we talk about library districts or park districts, even school districts, they will not discuss trading or giving away any revenue source. So I think this is good that we're doing that and not basically driving past the fire station to serve somebody that can be served by one block away. So I think that's a good idea. And then the dollar amount attached to that is about $9,500 difference. So over the next three years, this year would be $240,000, 2020 will be 242.5, and then 2021 will be 245. And if anybody has any questions, we've got the chief here, and then you also had a meeting, right, Laura?
Yes, I did.
So anybody have any questions? Comments?
I do have the maps that you requested for me. I have paper ones, and I have one that I could bring up on the screen if you're interested in that, so I'll pass on...
Yeah, I wanted to say to hand that out to show if you want copies for us. I wanted to make sure that we got a map out, and then the public could see, too, what our district really covers, because it's a lot more than you think, and a lot of places you probably didn't expect.
So everything in blue on there is the fire district.
So it's a big district when you go out west. The thing is, though, a lot of it is open land, though, that whole area that you see by just east of Bliss Road, that's all... most of it is open land.
Right, and that's all... a lot of that's forest-preserved land, so we won't have to try to cover that.
Yeah. And then on the far east end is Fermilab, even though it's considered part of the fire district, there's nothing in there that they collect taxes on. Then you see the little pockets inside of... inside the corporate limits of Batavia that SCAP Union has been trying to slowly bring into the city.
Okay. Would anybody care to make a motion to send this to council?
So moved. Second.
Motion by...
Both of them.
Meitzler. Second by Serone, or...
Salvati.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Alan, Chief, I got a question.
Sure.
What... as you look down at the corner of Tanner Road and it looks where Nelson Lake Road comes through there, there's that small little piece there?
Yes.
That's... we don't... we're not completely surrounding that piece, and that's out there as an island of its own. Why wouldn't we want to let someone else take that?
To be honest with you, I think... I don't really think that is part... I think that might be a mistake on there.
Okay.
Either that, or it's completely open land and there's no buildings on it.
That's not open land. Right there.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that is... right there. That's not open land. There's three houses in that... three or four houses in there that come in off of...
Right, come in off of Tanner.
Tanner.
And there's a couple along Deer Path, I think.
Yeah. No, there are houses right there. They back up against Deer Path.
Other houses right there? As far as I know, I don't protect them. I'm almost positive that's a North Aurora's area.
Might be just inherited.
Okay, so it could be a misprint. Laura said she'd look into it. All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No other.
All right, so that can go... did we get a vote on that?
Yeah, it passed.
Yes.
Okay. So that can go on consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we'll go on then to item number eight, which is resolution 19-020-R, awarding a grant under facade improvement grant program for 112 West Wilson Street, Batavia Tech Center. Alderman Atech isn't here tonight, so Alderman McFadden.
I thought this was ours.
Unless you wanna just turn it right over to Chris?
I'll just turn it over to Chris, yeah.
Okay, Chris?
Sure. Thank you.
Good job, Chris.
Well done.
Hello. We have an application for a facade improvement grant that's been submitted by Batavia Tech Center LLC. The company is represented by ownership in Mr. Keith Shower and the office manager, Kerry Johnson, tonight. They're behind me now, and I'm sure they are available to answer questions. Essentially, the Batavia Tech Center LLC bought... at one point, it was the bank, and another point, it might have been school headquarters, but it's at 12 West Wilson Street, which is the two-story building. It's about 6,700 square feet in floor area, and this building is an historic building erected back in 1887. Since they bought the property back in December of 2017, they've replaced all the windows in the building, and that amounted to about $118,000. They also replaced the trim around the windows, repaired the trim and painted it. This project actually is to replace the exterior doors. There are three doors that are under question tonight. The... on the far west side of the building, there's a single door. I believe that probably leads to staircase upstairs.
Yes.
CAE, they... their home base is on Bellevue, you know, east of River, but they had planned initially to build an addition out of that building, but instead, they bought the building I just mentioned. CAE is occupied in the entire upper floor, and the ground floor is occupied by Prairie Counseling Services. So the building has that westerly single door that goes to the stairwell upstairs, and then towards the middle of the building, along the street face, is a double door that they're replacing, and they're also requesting funds to replace the vestibule door that separates the vestibule area from the working and occup... the working area, which is occupied by Prairie Counseling. But when completed this project, assuming it is completed with the funding, the doors being replaced will represent a significant facelift across this whole building, and as it is a strategically located building in the downtown, it'll have an effect on the entire central business district. As we stated in the memo, it's kind of a complicated request in that we don't have precedent for replacing vestibule doors, at least I didn't find any. But obviously, we have precedent on the facade grant improvement for replacing exterior doors. In discussing the matter with Jeff Albertson, he and I thought that it would make sense if we were to make this particular vestibule door question, or I should say, activity eligible under the facade grant improvement. If you look at the facade grant improvement guidelines, it neither lists vestibule doors as eligible nor does it specifically list them as ineligible, and both those lists do exist within the guidelines. So if we were to consider the fact that the vestibule itself provides energy conservation to the building, although architecturally, they may not be an exterior door, functionally, they serve with respect to the energy envelope, and that's not my vinacler, that's Jeff's. So evidently, in the building trade, an energy envelope includes the vestibule area. So the thinking was, and I would recommend that the council consider the vestibule doors as eligible for the facade grant, and include those in the other two doors for replacement purposes, funding the project at an amount of $5,000 or half the project cost, whichever is less. The estimated cost, based on the lowest bid for the project, is $14,364. So again, the ownership is available to answer any questions if you have any of them or of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Drew, you wanna take it, or you want me to take it?
Um...
I'll take it.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Well done.
Well, I'm just gonna say, even though I agree with you, Chris, it's not identified as eligible or ineligible, looking through it, but I think it's with... I think it certainly falls within the guidelines of the intent of what we're trying to do with these grants. And I mean, I gotta commend you on what you've done with the building so far. It's really taken that building... every day when we drive by there, we all drive by there, walk by there, and I'm sure we've all looked at it and said, geez, when is somebody gonna do something to this building, as we do with a lot of buildings in town? And somebody finally has done something, so that's very good to see. In fact, when I saw the windows going up, I was quite surprised that we hadn't seen you in here asking for a facade improvement grant for the windows.
Wasn't aware of it.
Okay. So it was... it's great to see people stepping forward and doing what needs to be done. I'm curious, not that this has anything to do with the... it's obvious what the business downstairs does, but the upstairs business does what?
We're... it's the same business that's at 280 Bellevue. It's computer-aided engineering.
Okay.
It's high-level computer simulation for the automotive industry.
Oh, okay.
So we're the major supplier for GM, Chrysler, FCA, Tesla, all the car manufacturers come out to our facility, because we preanalyze all the parts before they're actually manufactured through our engineering team. Kind of nichey.
You know, that's... I'm glad I asked you that. I'm glad you said what you do, because, you know, you would never know that that was happening right here in our little town of Batania.
The mayor will use... I'm not sure what we do either.
The mayor will use that someday in his...
When I started talking about it, I was thinking, I was asking somebody from Fermilab what they do out there, but now it makes sense to me a little bit. So I'm supportive of it. I certainly encourage you to follow through with what you're doing. Anybody else have any questions? Mike?
Well, I'm supportive of it. Also, I think, you know, it's a little gray area that if we support it or not in our audience, but the... it's an energy-efficient way to have a building, to seal the building envelope. We here in Batavia do wanna be known as a green compliant city, and this is, you know, helping us reach that goal. And it is doing wonders to the building, so thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, can I get a motion to recommend the city council approval of resolution 19-20-R?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ure, second by Serone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. So, Chris, this will go to the next city council meeting?
It will. The first meeting in March, if the council would like to have it on the regular agenda versus a consent, I'll be sure to make that happen.
I think we should put it on the regular agenda, yes. And if you care to come to that meeting, quite often, what the mayor would do when that meeting, quite often what the mayor would do when we bring it up under, under the agenda is, it gives you an opportunity to get up and talk a little bit about what your business does in town. So, I think it's very exciting what you're doing, so.
It's gonna be a TV there.
Yep, you'll be on TV all summer, yeah. It's amazing how many people watch TV at two o'clock in the morning. Alright, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number nine, discussion for consideration of a economic development business retention and expansion incentive for a property tax rebate program at twelve-twenty-five Douglas Road. Alderman A. Tech isn't here. Alderman McFadden, you want to take this, or just turn it right over?
I'll turn it right over to Laura.
Sure, and this is also going to be, Chris Aiston will provide you with some documentation. This is one of our current businesses, who currently has a facility of about twenty thousand square feet. They are expanding their business and needing a larger space, and they have taken a look at three separate sites. One of those sites is located here in the city of Batavia. There's another in a contiguous suburb, and there was another site that they were contemplating, which is up in southeastern Wisconsin. And so with that, I will turn it over to Chris Aiston to describe a potential incentive to this company to select the Batavia site.
Thank you. I wish we could actually provide the name of the company, but we're under a confidentiality agreement. Basically, we're not going to be naming specifically the locations that are competing also, but we can generically explain them. The project site is to be located at twelve-twenty-five Douglas Road. To give you some bearing... Here's Kirk Road, this is Kingsland, that's Batavia. You'll note that directly across the street, they built that hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand square foot building where Focus Logistics is at, and CAE, or CAS, Castleton Solutions has also located, there's fifty thousand square feet left in that building. So this is a brand-new building, proposed to be a hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. As this slide shows, essentially the footprint, fairly generic in nature, they haven't gotten anywhere near preliminary engineering, but this would be where the site is, and the building located on the site. And it's critical to note that the building's location will ultimately determine how this incentive program will play out. So, again, the site's about four-hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet, it's about nine acres. Their, the project is to have fifteen exterior docks, two drive-in doors, floor ratio's about just over a third, and the clear height there is thirty-two feet. The estimated value of the building is seven-point-eight, seven-point-six-eight million dollars. The proposed uses are, this particular company, their U.S. headquarters is located here in Batavia, so that will remain in place. So they'll continue to have their management and administrative offices here at this new building, primarily be a warehouse distribution facility with some assembly, and then after some period of time, they'll move in some lines for plastic injection molding. To give you some idea, again, where the project is and why it's important to recognize how the school district will be involved, this case, the Geneva School District, the site straddles a township line, which is shown in red on the large map, and also shown in red on that kind of focused graphic of the site. So, when a site has, when a site straddles a township line, it, you can't aggregate the parcels into one. Normally, when a development is going to occur on two different parcels, the assessor will eliminate that parcel number altogether, create a whole new parcel number, and identify that parcel under the new number. However, when you're on two different sides of a township, they can't do that. So, the land to the south of that line is in Batavia Township, and also within the Batavia School District one-oh-one jurisdiction. To the north of that line, which is the larger piece, is in Geneva School District. This is a dual incentive program as proposed, with the city of Batavia and the Geneva School District participating in the rebate. You don't have to read all this, I'm just telling you that if, the way it works out is when the building in question straddles a township line, where the majority of the floor of the building is, that determines what township will assess the value of the building, and what township will receive all of the value from the assessment purposes of the building. So, they're not going to divvy it up, so what's gonna happen is Batavia Township, and in this case, Batavia School District, they will continue to get the land value of the smaller property, which is about three-point-two acres. The five-point acre piece north of that, that will not just continue to get the land value of that parcel, which remains intact, but when you look at that parcel's tax bill, it'll also have all of the building value on it. So the tax bill that goes, that comes from the southerly parcel will read zero for value on the building. The northerly parcel's tax bill will have all of the value of the building. So the incremental value of the project after it's been built will impact still the city of Batavia, because obviously both parcels are wholly located in the city, but it'll only affect the revenue stream in Geneva Township and Geneva School District, and any other affected taxes. They just happen to run coterminous, the district and the township. So that's basically what that says. And that's by agreement. I called the supervisor assessments. I had talked to both Geneva and Batavia Township. They agreed to that, that's how it works. And I called the supervisor assessments office at the county, and they also indicated that. I checked other tax bills, where surprisingly there are other situations like this, and it's, that's how it plays out. One parcel gets all of the building value, and they retain the land value, and the other parcel just gets their land value, and they don't get any of the building value. Alright, so, as Laura said, there are three competing sites. One is in southeast Wisconsin, generally in the Kenosha area, where their real competitive advantage is, I believe, is, it's actually, the offer is not from a community, but a kind of a not-for-profit economic development organization that owns a kind of a development business park, and they own the land, and they're offering the land at a dollar twenty-six per square foot, plus one percent closing legal fees. To give you some idea how that competes with Chicagoland suburbs, our area's more like four dollars to four-twenty-five a square foot. So, obviously their land value is extremely attractive, particularly with respect to this, this offer for incentive. The property is completely served by utilities, and they claim they have a state-of-the-art fiber optics. It's a new business park, I don't doubt that for a minute. And the organization's also offering a low-interest loan, which is basically prime rate less a hundred basis points, up to one-point-five million. And again, the property's located in southeast Wisconsin. The other alternative site is actually in one of the Chicago western suburban areas. We're gonna assume that the price of the land, based on the broker, they have an L O I in, is right at four to four-twenty-five a square foot. However, they do have an advantage in that where it's located, the development has existing detention facilities that were constructed when they built the development. So, whereas they might have, in the case of the Batavia site, you have to build, you have to buy enough land to detain water on-site, they don't have to buy quite as much land in this western suburb alternative site, because they'll be entitled to drain into the existing facility. But, here again, the really strong play that this site has is the community in question was able to work with other taxing jurisdictions, so we have a total of six of them, and have each of them agree to a fifty percent property tax rebate program for ten years. And this was, all of this was provided to us, by the way, in writing, from the alternative sites. They're also offering a fifty percent permit fee waiver of two-hundred thousand dollars, and a fifty percent utility tax rate rebate, I'm sorry, utility tax rebate of the two-hundred thousand dollars, and the rebate is on the, is on the taxes, the municipal taxes against their utilities. It's not on the rate itself. And again, the location is in the western suburb. Based on the evaluation that was provided by their consultant, the best offer among, the best offer is valued at about one-point-three million. As I said, this particular offer that we're recommending to the city council from Batavia is to, is two participants, in this case, the school district and the city of Batavia. And as you know, the school district's bill is the lion's share of your tax bill, and it's certainly their participating rebate value is that and then some against the city. So it's far greater in value, I'm sorry.
I think there's just a mistake on the slide where it says city of Batavia and Batavia School District. That should be Geneva School District.
Yeah, a minor big mistake. That's Geneva School District, I'm sorry.
Might be important to Batavia.
Kind of important, yeah. That should read Geneva School District. Thank you very much, Laura. So anyways, it's a ten-year program, kind of front-loaded. So the initial three years, the rebate is in the amount of seventy-five percent. So twenty-five percent is retained by the city and the school district. Years four through seven, it stays steady at fifty percent, and fifty percent rebated, fifty percent retained by the two districts, or two jurisdictions. And years eight through ten, that last three years, the rebate is only twenty-five percent, and seventy-five percent is retained by the district. This is attractive in that it, being front-loaded, it offers more money upfront to the developer and the property owner, as they're dealing with more upfront costs in settling into the building. And it's kind of attractive to, I believe, the jurisdictions that are receiving, because over time they'll see their amount of their taxes grow. Again, the rebate for the purposes of Geneva and the, Geneva School District is, they're only going to be applying the rebate to the building, whereas the city of Batavia will apply our percent rebate to both the building and the land. That's both parcels, because we, again, have jurisdiction, we're both parcels. The estimated value of the combined rebate for the city and the school district is not, just over nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We believe that's conservative for two reasons. One, in our model, we utilize the two percent real estate value inflation annually. We're seeing that greater than that now, but probably on a ten-year average, that's probably not a bad guess. It, I believe it's conservative, and what I think is real conservative, based on history, is we're holding the two thousand and seventeen tax rate as constant. So, in, I think all of our experiences we've seen, at least for certainly a number of different jurisdictions, is tax rates have increased over time, and by percentages, but with respect to the rebate, it's by dollars per hundred value. So, if we hold that constant, we come up, I believe, with a conservative estimate of our total rebate. The rebate will be actual numbers, though. So, if the assessed value goes up four percent, and the rate goes up twenty cents or something from either district, the resulting tax revenue will be greater, but the percentage will stay the same. This is what I handed out, I don't expect you to read it here, but it, it basically portrays the values of the incentive over time on an annual basis. We have the assessed value, we have the rate, we have the resulting tax, and then we have the rebate amount based on the percentages. In summary, though, we've broken it down into five-year experiences, so aggregating those numbers, after the first five years, the city will have rebated to the developer about eighty thousand dollars, the school district just over five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. The city will have retained during this first five-year period about thirty-five percent of the total taxes due, which is about forty-three thousand dollars. The school district will retain about forty-three percent of total taxes due, which is about three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. During the next five years, the retention goes up, because we are rebating a lower percent to the developer. And so you can see what those numbers are, and you ask, well, why is, the percentage is different between the school district and the city, because they're supposed to be twenty, seventy-five percent for three years, the same throughout, but that's because of the value of the land. Again, the land, with our agreement with the school district, they stay whole on the land. It's only on the incremental change, which is the building, that they rebate their taxes. And again, still, the lion's share of the rebate falls on the school district. So the nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars rebated, the city, the school district will have rebated after the complete ten years about eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. The city will have rebated one-twenty-six, and the city will retain about a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. The school district retains almost one-point-one million, and all toll, the two districts together retain a twelve-point, I'm sorry, one-point-two-two, one million. And again, the total value of the rebate, conservatively, I believe, is nine-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. Where the next steps, we would like to see the council consider this, and hopefully come to a decision to recommend approval to the city council. We would like to send that formally, and we're having a telephone conversation with the business tomorrow afternoon, to confirm that the cow has considered it, the makeup of the cow is identical to the city council. We have a good reason to believe that if things don't change, that the council will replicate the cow's position. We can't guarantee that. We did present this to the school district on the eleventh of March, which was a Monday night when you people were meeting, or February, rather, and they, they approved it unanimously. Their feeling is, you know, this doesn't generate any kids, it's all new money to us, and even though we're giving some back, you know, the old adage, fifty percent of something's better than fifty percent of nothing. And it'd be different if we had, you know, another site in town, where, say, that site was wholly located in Batavia School District, and we had to approach that, or. Bottom line is, if, there's limited numbers of properties that are both in the city of Batavia and in their school district, so they see this as a great opportunity. Finally, we need to develop a draft intergovernmental agreement that will be between the city and the school district, and then also will name the two parties representing the business, which is the business itself, and then the property owners, the holding company of the real estate. All four parties will be part of that. And then we expect to develop actually a redevelopment agreement that establishes certain responsibilities and obligations on both the city of Batavia, you know, in terms of, we're gonna process this through, it's zoned according, it's actually, the property is zoned to allow the project as proposed. Now, we don't expect any relief. There may be relief on, on setback. We'll know that better when they get to site planning. But in either case, we'll process it according to our rules, and of course, conversely, on their part, they're going to have to build the project. They'll have to submit plans, go through the process, in this case, design review if there's no zoning relief, through plant commission, and, and they'll have to build it according to our, our codes and regulations, and, and receive all the required permits. So that's where we're at next, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Is based on your experience and kind of the creativity with the front-loading of that rebate, how do you think we stack up against the other two?
It's a tough one. I think we've got a fair and competitive proposal. The situation is that the, the bulk of the company is overseas, and the chairman and CEO of the company, it's probably held firm, also lives overseas. So on one hand, it's very possible that he may be talking to his plant manager here in Batavia and saying, look, it's all about the numbers, you know, what's the best deal I can get? I mean, I'm not gonna, if they move to this western suburb that's not Batavia, they're likely not to lose any employees, you know, it's just a, perhaps a longer drive, depending on where their employees live. So all things being equal, this is a better deal. That said, I think we have a hip pocket in that they're already based in Batavia, and I'd like to think that they have experience with our utilities, with our public works people, with our building and community development people, and I have certainly heard no complaints from them. They approached us, they told us from the beginning that this is gonna be a dollar situation. But the one thing, and we're gonna reiterate it tomorrow on the phone, is we'll ensure, or certainly request in a very strong way, that we be given, if need be, a second shot, in case they say, look, the numbers didn't work, we really like your property, we'll say, well, you know, let's go back to the drawing board. They will not generate as much demand on our power, that we'll put them in their economic development class that we have, where the reductions in power rate would apply. But maybe there's other things we can do. I think one thing we're offering is, the city staff actually has the authority to reduce some costs associated with installation of power equipment, and that's based on a percentage. And staff got together and, you know, I think Gary's here, we're looking at that seriously as to making that offer. That'll sweeten the deal, won't make up the delta, but it'll help, and it'll show that we wanna help. help, and it'll show that we want to help. So that's what I can say. You know, there's value in the other incentives, there's no question about it. It's a competitive world out there, you know. Landing a project like this is obviously a big deal to a community because it has so much new assessed value. It's a vacant property right now. For us, it's both attracting, but also retention. We're retaining existing business in town. So I think that has some importance as well.
So Chris, to be clear, if we were successful, who would provide the electric to them?
No, we provide the electric.
We would provide, not Geneva, because they have their own...
Right, but it's still within the corporate boundaries of Batavia. They're, by ordinance, we're the only provider of electricity. So that'll all be new utilities to a vacant property.
Yeah, Chris, approximately, how much would this generate in permit fees and connection fees?
Well, it's a 150,000 square foot building, Jeff. It's real ballpark.
Yeah, I had this question.
Just two, three days ago, right?
I would estimate in utilities, fees, and permit fees...
Maybe two?
Probably in the 150,000 to 200,000 dollars.
Chris, about how many new employees will this bring to Batavia, and how many would we lose if they moved to their other location?
Well, because their existing facility, which is more like 20-some-odd thousand square feet, is primarily warehousing. They do have some office personnel. There's really only 15 FTEs, right, full-time equivalent employees. They expect to go to 45. I guess it's going to kind of depend on when they bring their manufacturing element into play. I can tell you that the company makes products for companies like Stanley and DeWalt. I mean, it's, they're mostly power tool products. So it's, they have a great business. I think they have about a million, a million square feet on the roof in China.
Do transportation costs figure into their sighting for whatever it is that they produce? Because I mean, we're near some transportation for them going all the way up to Wisconsin. Does that make a difference?
You know, sure it does. Obviously, in a warehouse distribution, transportation cost sometimes is third to employment and utility cost. But I can tell you that the western suburban facility has good transportation access also. But yeah, I think this site is well situated. I mean, you're less than, you know, half a mile from strategic arterial in Kirk Road, so.
Also, I recognize that this can't be public, the name of the company, but is it material to ask, because they're an existing customer of ours, has the City of Batavia entered into incentive agreements with them in the past?
Not that I'm aware of. Do you know, Gary?
No.
I don't believe so.
And then lastly, where do you get prime minus? That's, I'd like to go work there.
Chris, I got a couple of questions. It was just mentioned last night even that oil was starting to fill up all of our vacant land. So besides the obvious benefits of 50% of something is better than 50% of nothing, and more employment, and a little bit more electrical use, and not having a loss of employment, those are obvious benefits. But do those benefits outweigh the fact that once you fill that land up, there's not going to be the opportunity? So we're kind of, we're hurrying up the process of filling the land up, and do we really think we need to do that?
That's a good question. I've thought in front of this area committee that we don't have an awful lot of parcels that are 10 or 12 acres in size. The largest parcel that's on the market is a KIM property, and that's only slightly on the market based on the asking price, but that's 40 acres. Everything else is tops at 12 to 15 acres, and this happens to be a nine-acre site. So it is true that there are other, there's a diminishing supply, which I believe, if you believe in supply and demand, will raise the cost of land as you move forward. So the asking prices will probably go up. However, you know, we've got a bird in the hand here, and after 10 years, the incentive will go away. And it's kind of the name of the game, Dave. I hate to say it, but you know, you've seen these other competing projects, and if you're not going to, and just because, let's say this parcel gets built without an incentive, right, just because there's demand for space, that's not going to change the fact that for years going forward, other communities with available parcels won't continue to offer incentives, and it will make them more competitively attractive than our property.
And it could very well be true, who knows what the future brings, but it could be past the 10-year frame that that parcel, if there weren't incentives offered, would have something built on it. So we'd be missing out on the 10 years of whatever incentive or whatever income there is. Plus, like you said, a bird in the hand, you know.
It's a judgment call, but I think that, on average, we retain 51% over the 10 years. I would agree with you wholeheartedly if it was, hey, let's give them 75% for 10 years. And not only will it make a big difference with respect to our number, I don't think it'll still get to 1.3, obviously, but it will make our place stronger. But I think that's probably overly aggressive, because to some extent, I believe, you know, they stopped making land a long time ago, and this just happens to be a piece of property that's available. Eventually, someone's going to say, I'll build on that site even, it's going to cost me X. I just think we don't want to lose a, what amounts to an international company's US headquarter location in this town. It's something that, it's good for our image, if nothing else.
The other question I have is, how does it work, and I'm sure it works however you agreed to make it work, but what would be the intent of, when this, when this one to 10 years starts? Does the, does the one year, I mean, they're paying taxes, somebody's paying taxes on the property right now. So does the one year start the day the new person purchases, or when they get their occupancy permit? When does that one year start?
The way we're proposing it is, and it's estimated like 2021, the year that the building will be completed and occupied and assessed. And that kind of depends on the time of year. My experience is that if a building is occupied by the middle of the year, they assess it for its full value. So it's going to, let's say they agree to this proposal, and they break ground yet this year. I think the soonest it can happen is 2021, payable '22. But whatever it happens, we're going to, and this buys them some time to their advantage. We don't start the program where there's little or no rebate. We wait till the real value comes in, and then we start the program. That gives us 10 years. And I think that is a fair way to do it, and, you know, I'm being very upfront, I think that's the right way to do it. And that's typical of incentive programs.
One more question. Kind of playing the other side of this here is, say, you know, global reorganization happens in this company in two or three or five years, and they walk away from this property, does that rebate stay with the property, or are we going to write that in the agreement that...
No, they have to. The agreement includes they need to occupy the building in order for the rebate to stay for at least 10 years. The proposal is that the business is to sign a 10-year lease with at least one five-year option. But that's a good question. If they split, it doesn't go with the successor occupant.
That's what I wanted to make sure, that if, for some reason, because it happens all the time.
It does happen.
If that happens, then it goes back to full value for both the school district and...
It's in the draft agreement now, and I'm sure it'll stay.
I was going to bring up the opportunity lost before, but the thing that, as a council, we usually lean towards a bird in the hand. But the thing that bothers me about it, that I just want to bring up front, is that it was said that this is going to use very little power. And that weighs to the opportunity loss, because somebody else coming in could be a big power user. I still don't know. It's, you can go either way. I'm not trying to sway one way or another, but...
Maybe I overstated. For the record, I wouldn't call it very little.
Yeah.
And particularly when the manufacturing begins.
Because it's a plastic injection molding, and that type of manufacturing tends to be a very high electric use. So it just depends to what extent they bring in the manufacturing here. And if it goes well, I think that they will scale that up, and they've got room to do it there.
Oh, okay.
But they bought it in order to have room to grow. They're only 20,000 square foot right now, and they're doing some light assembly. And so they're going to be in 150,000 square foot and doing the light assembly, and then adding plastic injection molding in the future.
Well, that's good news, but if we were to get it, but we were told that there wasn't that much, and so...
I overstated. What I meant to say is that they do not meet or come close to, frankly, the place where we can offer an economic development incentive on our rates. That's what I meant to say. I was trying to put in the context of, what else can we throw at this?
Right.
But you can't throw electric rate reduction, because they don't meet the threshold.
They don't meet the ordinance.
That's a good question. I'm glad we clarified that.
And then, well, and then just to be aware, because you said, we'll get a right-of-first refusal type of thing, that we'll have a chance to come back?
We're going to mention that to them tomorrow for sure. You know, that hasn't been placed out there.
Oh, I thought you said they said that they would...
No, we're going to mention, well, I've let the broker know, and their consultant know, that we would like, if need be, another bid at that. You don't want to play that too strong, because they'll think, hey, we got something left.
I thought you said that it was...
No, we have not said that to them. We're not leaving any on the table as far as I'm concerned. Well, Lauren and I talked about this. We thought this was our best and final offer.
That's a double edged sword. If you end your conversation with, hey, if it doesn't work, let us know.
Yeah, they, that's going to tell them, well, what more can we get? So we told them it's our best and final offer.
Oh, good.
Otherwise, we're bidding against ourselves.
I didn't like playing that game. I didn't want to go, I had the impression that we were going down that path, and I didn't want to, so.
I would say that the only thing that was not put forth in the offer that they have on the table right now, but can be mentioned in the conversation tomorrow, is this reduction in the cost of connection to the utilities. It's not very much. It's not of a significant enough value that it probably is going to make a difference one way or the other. But it's like a little bit more that we can talk to them about tomorrow.
I'd be hesitant to think much about that, because we've had that asked of us in other cases. We've been not willing to bend on permit fees or local fees.
Right, right. Okay.
Well, we haven't, we've stood firm on the permit fees, even though both the other jurisdictions are offering some relief. You know, the electric, all the utilities are right to the site. I mean, it's essentially an island among our developed properties. So I don't think it's unreasonable, especially since the ordinance allows it to show some discretion if it matters in terms of, you know, you've really gone the distance with this. As Laura said, the numbers don't work out to be an awful lot of dough in the grand scheme of things. I mean, it's a $12 million investment all in. So, you know, is $40,000 or $50,000 going to matter too much? It's real money to me, and it might make a difference in terms of just how you're impressing upon them that we, you know, really feel it's important to keep them.
Yeah. Mark?
Just to follow up on Alan's question. Occupied, not owned, like if they leave, and they say, hey, we're done. This is about occupying the building and how we defined occupation. I mean, are they just going to say, yeah, we left some equipment behind, and we still own it, we still want our rebate? I mean, is it very clearly defined?
The agreement includes their ownership, which is an LLC that they've created, and the business. And so the business has to remain occupying as a tenant in that space. Now, what if the business goes bankrupt, and they close down, and they get out of that building? I don't remember how that's addressed in the draft. I do know that they're required to sign a lease that is for at least the term of the agreement. In this case, they're doing that for 10 years, plus five-year option. For certain, if, I mean, is it possible that they'll continue with their rent and not be there? I mean, I guess, say, the company, the business as a tenant goes belly up. You know, I think there's good reason to just say, okay, that's it. You know, you've gone, and you're not meeting the spirit of the agreement, which was that we want you here for 10 years. Let's work on the, I know, I think what you're saying is, if they split, even though they might have some shell organization, you know, three employees, you know, but I don't think it's likely. They're a strong business that's been around for a long time. The reason they're building is because they have more, they don't have enough capacity in their existing facility to do what they want to do. So their plan is to grow. But it's a point well taken. I'll talk to Lauren and Kevin about it, how we word the language.
Even if that were to happen, a majority of the additional value that was created by the investment would still be there, even though they would be able to apply for a vacancy reduction in the...
They could apply if they, if they were to vacate the building.
Right.
As the ownership, they can go to the board review, or not the board, I think it's called, property at the county, and request a reduction in their assessment. But actually, that's not true, because the agreement we wrote prohibits them from seeking a reduction in their taxes.
We'd still have the full tax property value.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm looking for. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, this isn't Foxconn or Amazon money, but just trying, making sure people understand, if anybody's watching, to, that we're preparing ourselves, so we're not giving away the farm. And this is additional revenue regardless, so.
Well, I think that, I would imagine that the agreement states that if they don't pay the taxes on it, they don't get the rebate.
Oh, of course.
Of course. But I guess what Mark was saying is that if they get, if they go vacant, can they apply for a reduction in taxes, which is about the only way you can get it? Because the value of the building doesn't change. It's the use changes, and by an income approach, they could argue that the value of the building has changed, because I'm not, we're not making any tenant rent. But again, I think under the Belt and Suspender Program, we got that tied up, where they cannot seek a reduction.
Right.
Just, lastly, I guess for me is, this sounds like it could be an important part for our utility, our electric utility, if they're going to be, you know, heat injection moldings. So if you're asking them for last look, perhaps, do you have something up your sleeve or in your quiver, or a bullet in your belt that you're going to propose to them? Are you prepared for that?
I'm prepared for it.
Okay. We don't need to discuss that, but...
And then also, one of the things that we discussed with them is that we're making more than a $3 million investment in the substation that will, the Paramount Substation, which is for our northeast business park. And, you know, the difference between being a ComEd business customer and a City of Batavia business customer means you've got Batavia linemen that respond to any outages in your area, instead of having to be at the whim of someone who serves thousands.
Well, that's our strength.
One other point, I think to carry on that same, they, you know, they're asking their questions under due diligence, naturally. And one of them had to do with power and reliability, and the fact that we're throwing $3 million or so in the plus into that northeast distribution substation. That was good for them to hear. But they also asked for our bond ratings, and comparing those against, and the school districts. Because if, you know, if you're in bad shape with respect to your bond rating, that could have an impact on your tax rates, because you may have to increase those rates to clear your debt. So they're looking in the future. Quite frankly, the site that they're looking at, this is, I think, our other, our competitive advantage with respect to the other western suburban site is, yes, you can buy less land, because they've got a regional defensive facility, so you can drain there. But our current tax rates are below. Your whole tax bill, you know, not the cities versus another city, or a school district versus another school district, when you add your total tax bill, which is what we all just care about, because that's the check we write, our current tax bill, all rates added, is less than that of the other property. I did that research, and it's clear that we have an advantage in that. Because when this deal goes away in 10 years, now they're paying their real rates. And, you know, if they can see that far down the road, I'd like to think they can. That should be a competitive advantage for us.
One last thing I'll bring up is, I think we all have to remember that this property could be built as a spec building. It could be nothing more than a logistics warehouse. That would be the shell of the building, whatever the value of the construction costs are, and it could be used as a warehouse and nothing more. So I don't think we're really settling just because they are proposing this today. This is a use that I think makes sense for the area. It makes sense for whatever their timeframe is to expand and do their injection molding and... injection molding and use more electricity. Plus, I think, with the base already being here, I think it makes sense to try to keep a business in town and expand it than just wait and see what else shows up.
And to that point, the bulk of the buildings that are being built in the region, let alone the City of Batavia, are built as spec primarily warehousing. The building across the street was spec. The building at Redant and Douglas is spec. The buildings that are proposed on Nagel, the two buildings of Nagel and Fabian, those are being built as spec. So who knows how long they'll stay vacant. Presumably, they'll fill, hopefully quickly. But the demand out there is logistics and warehousing.
Any other questions? If not, yeah, Marty?
Yeah, just a real quick question. Any concerns with their expansion, with transportation problems or constraints at Douglas and Kirk, since that's a non-lighted intersection? Is that gonna increase pressure in that area?
I can't say. Certainly, it's gonna increase it over what's there now. I mean, it's a vacant parcel, they're gonna be having 15 loading docks, there will be a lot of truck traffic. Kirk, obviously, as a regional arterial, can accept that much traffic. As far as what is the traffic impact that might result in requiring a traffic light, I can't say. Maybe the county, they'll pay a transportation fee to the county?
Impact.
But I can't answer your question. It's a good question. I can't answer it.
That was only just wondering if it would figure into their evaluations of the area.
They haven't mentioned that.
I think they like the site, based on, A, the proximity to their, to Kirk Road, and B, to their existing facility. It won't make much change for their existing users and truckers. It was on their radar very early on, because they knew it was available, and they think they know who the builder will be, and they're, they're happy with that builder's product to date. But I don't know that there's much discussion about a traffic impact.
I think the network around that site
Yeah.
with the signalized light just south of there should be fine to handle whatever that size building would add to it.
Dan?
This is the last time we had a major traffic study regarding this type of project. Remember, there were a bunch of residents that didn't want a warehouse in that site, and they ended up going with the high user, which were townhomes? If these were townhomes, then we might need a light there. But, you know, the trucks that are coming off this thing, you will be negligible. You will not be able to tell, based on the volume we already see there. I don't think that will be in a shootout.
Marty, you got anything else before we go any further?
No, that, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I know Laura and Chris are looking for some direction from us, so does, I guess the easy way here is to say, does anyone have any strong objection to them continuing, continuing this conversation tomorrow with the incentives that have been discussed? Okay, we're getting a lot of shaking heads no, so I guess you've got direction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Okay, now we're gonna go on to item number 10, Resolution 19-24-R, awarding the annual electric tree trimming contract to Asplund Tree Expert Company for a amount not to exceed $200,000. Altonan O'Brien?
Just as you said, this is a contract for this year, 2019, for Asplund. It's on the West Side. We didn't do it in 2018, and not to exceed $200,000, just to clear for electric lines and for the fiber optic. Pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments from anyone?
The only, the only thing I noticed as I was going through it was, in just comparing the, the costs, is Asplund's, that's not how you say it, but...
Asplund.
Asplund, whatever. Their chipper cost was significantly, everything else was kind of relational.
Right.
Because they own their own, as versus the other, the other company has to rents, or bring that in. It was a, it's a significant cost difference versus everything else.
Then, I don't know, I can't speak to the other company's bid cost, as to why they would have bid it that way. But Asplund obviously does own all their own equipment, yeah.
Dan?
And does this mean that this year ComEd is spending money? That's why there's contractors available or not, or, because there was nothing last year, so?
Well, if you recall, actually, we brought you a rejection of a bid, because last year's bid price for roughly the same scope was $750,000.
Right.
So last year's market was upset, yes.
So for clarity's sake, we'll do the East Side in 2021? Is it every other year?
Yeah, we do them every other year. So we swap from West to East, East to West. Yep, so we're a year behind.
So anybody else, anything? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mysler, second by Chanzet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll have it.
I think we ought to talk about it, maybe, could we get some, when we talk about it on, at the council meeting, some clear definition of what areas? Is it the entire West Side, or...
It's the west of the river. Yeah, there's no, it doesn't get any clearer than that.
Everything west of the river.
And to talk about the benefits.
I just think it'd be good to start the conversation, you know, so people know that it's coming again.
It's coming. Just one quick question for you, Gary. We had four people who were no bids, four companies. May I give any explanations?
That's not uncommon. Actually, we were happy to have two bidders this year. It's the first time, I think, since I've been here in 10 years, we've had a second bidder. So, yeah, it's, it's not uncommon. In fact, just a few months ago, we sat with our, our own tree company that does our brush collection, they were gonna be getting into this business, so we reached out to them, and then they chose not to submit a bid, so, yeah.
When, when you discuss it, can you also talk about a little bit why we have a tree trimming program, what the benefits are to it? Because there is always a lot of, when any tree is cut down for any reason, it's the bad city doing horrible things, versus there is a proactive reason we do what we do.
Absolutely.
This winter is a great example.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, half the pruning already got done for us.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, by mother nature.
Okay. We'll do, thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you. Next item is project status. Laura?
Um, yes. I gave you a lot of project status yesterday evening, but something that I failed to mention were the upcoming annual updates. And in case anybody wanted to tune in for those, next week, on February 26th, we have the Finance and IT Department is gonna be giving their annual update. On March 5th is Public Works. On March 12th, we have Community Development, Economic Development. And on March 19th is Human Resources, the Police Department, and the Fire Department. So they both look back at what their departments were working on in the past year, what their goals are for the coming year. And then, this year, I've also asked them to incorporate any elements of the Strategic Action Plan that their department has responsibilities for. We've had a number of meetings. We probably, in 75% of the Strategic Action Plan items, there has been some activity that has gone on that we can share with you in those, in those presentations. And then also, just to let anyone know who would be interested in attending the Committee of the Whole Discussion on One Washington Place, that will also be on the February 26th Committee of the Whole Agenda. And there, the, you'll be discussing three things, should the city move forward with the environmental remediation that needs to be done on that site. And if the answer to that is yes, then should the city authorize signing the Environmental Indemnification Agreement that the developer's financer has requested in order to move forward with the project? And then also, should the city agree to the second amended and restated redevelopment agreement? We need to revise the redevelopment agreement for the developer being responsible for the environmental remediation at the city's expense, but it just wouldn't make sense to mobilize two different teams to do the remaining demolition, excavation, and remediation. It just makes sense, from a cost and time perspective, to have one entity responsible for that. Other than that, would you like me to kinda go through a little bit of the, the development projects that are, are going on right now? I'll run quickly through some of the highlights, because they're, they're both residential projects, but there are also commercial projects that are going on, and industrial projects that are going on. We have on the residential side, you've got the Winding Creek Annexation Agreement and Public Hearing is scheduled for the February 26th Committee of the Whole Meeting. And that is the residential property that's coming online behind the former Sam's Club. The Windmill Landing Site, that's the second of the senior living facilities that are located on Hawks Drive. That's coming along. We've got the initial footing inspections are being done this week. And then also, at Prairie Commons, we have had building permits for several of the buildings that are ready to go up on that property, which is exciting. So despite the fact that it's the dead of winter, we've got quite a bit of construction going on right now, too. As far as the commercial, we've got the Avenue Chevy Raising Cane's Development will be coming to the Plan Commission tomorrow night. And then also, we have several restaurants that are working on their build-out here in our downtown area. One is the Boca Ditos Restaurant at 109 East Wilson. Another is Oak and Swine Restaurant at 107 East Wilson. And Riverside Pizza Restaurant at 142 West Wilson, which is in the old Walgreens location. And you heard tonight that we have this potential for another 150,000 square foot industrial building in our industrial park, but I shared with you yesterday that we also had a call from a broker who is working with a company that is looking to build 150,000 square foot building for that company. They're looking at a number of different locations, but we called them today and discussed a few locations here in Batavia that we hope that they will be interested in. And that's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Anybody have any question?
Dave?
Marty?
Just for clarity, Laura, when you say the city will, or bear the expense of remediation, that would be without a project. Since this is attached to a project, would we not recover that money via reimbursement under the TIF?
Yes. The remediation costs are a reimbursable expense under the TIF Act. So, so long as there is sufficient increment beyond the payment for the, the bond cost, then yes, we would be able to pay those costs.
Yeah, and that was just what I wanted to get out to the public, is when we say at our expense, the revenue for that could be through the TIF funding.
That's true.
Thank you.
Dan?
There's another question. The drive-down is, what, three weeks from tomorrow?
Yeah, March 13?
Yeah. It just, it seems to me that Metro US usually puts out their position statements on, on whatnot. We haven't seen them yet. Do you know if those are coming?
I'd be happy to check on those.
Anybody else have any questions for Laura?
For sure.
Jeff, I got a question for you. Over in Drew's Ward, my ward, which happens to be the same ward, probably the most controversial thing we've had in the last couple of years is, is the removal of the trees and the putting up of a fence along the Mooseheart property. Now, the trees have been removed. Have they applied for a fence permit?
Very timely question.
No, they have not. No, they have not. We actually, we got a copy of the letter from Mooseheart that went to the residents today. We actually reached out and sent an email to Mooseheart today, and basically reminded them that they are subject, the portion of Mooseheart that is in the city, they are subject to issuing a permit for the fence. Also, that there was some question about the height of the fence. So we did reiterate to them that, you know, the portion that is in Batavia is limited to a six-foot fence. So we have not gotten a response to that email yet, but we did reach out to them today.
Okay. So to date, just for clarity, so if someone listening can't hear you, but they can hear me, there has been no application for a fence permit yet to date?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Hmm.
Okay, can I get a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.